Good evening and welcome to the Bellingham City Council January 25th session. And we have three announcements for us this evening. The first one is Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. There will be a public hearing regarding the Aloha Motel property redevelopment on Monday, February 8th at 7:00 PM. There will be a public hearing regarding the Army Street property redevelopment on Monday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. And also, we did move an agenda item, Bill Number 21130, regarding the inter-local agreement for the sewer services, and we moved it from the consent agenda to Public Works. And with that, if you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. April Barker?
Here.
Dan Hamill?
Here.
Gene Knutson?
Here.
Michael Lillquist?
Here.
Roxanne Murphy?
Here.
Pinky Vargas?
Here.
Terry Borneman?
Here.
We're going to start with our 15-minute public comment period. And if I could remind you to please state your full name when you come up to the podium and watch the time. You have three minutes. If you could please be concise and share with everyone on your time. So our first speaker this evening is going to be Clayton Petrie. Come on down, Clayton.
Hello, my name's Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. The first thing I wanted to speak to you about is that the County Planning Commission voted unanimously to mirror your planning commission's recommendation to slightly expand the Bellingham UGA in two areas. I think they were of much the same mind, that planning for more commuting into town for work and that housing choice doesn't matter is a recipe for disaster, and I agree. We currently have a special affordable housing emergency and are asking the state to declare a homeless housing emergency as well. If you care about those two issues, please refer to the Washington State Department of Commerce 2015 Housing Needs Assessment. I've sent it to you as part of the update process. Wacom County and especially Bellingham are at the bottom of the barrel, literally at the bottom of the list for all of Washington's 39 counties. We're doing something wrong. Wacom County is dead last in the state for both measures of fair market rental affordability for both families and for a single person. Wacom County trails the state by 20 percentage points for owner-occupied housing, and only one county is worse than Wacom County in the percentage of owner-occupied housing that is affordable. That's bad news. Wacom County's rental vacancy rate is dangerously low, and Bellingham's is even lower. HUD considers less than 5% to be an unhealthy market. Wacom County is at less than 2%, and the city of Bellingham is even lower. Your land capacity analysis assumes a much more healthy vacancy rate. The issue still hasn't been addressed, nor has the 2,000 to 4,000 affordable housing units, our consolidated plan points out. This month, you read in the Herald, the United Way reports that 49% of our citizens in Bellingham earn less than the basic cost of living. Only two counties in Washington score lower. Last week, the Opportunity Council reported that finding and keeping a good job and a home here is a huge challenge. One third of us say we have to choose between paying rent or their mortgage or meeting other basic needs. Bellingham, in its first third of Growth Management Act years, captured about 2/3 of all growth coming to Wacom County. In the last five, Bellingham captured less than half of that, primarily due to high housing prices and land supply shortages. The comp plan update process is supposed to be a review of what has happened and a correction of what is not working. Staying the course with some of the worst results in the state is not what we should be doing. I believe that with this information, this new information, you should revisit your proposal to the county, take another look at what both your planning commission and the accounting commission unanimously recommended that you do. I think it's a worthy conversation to have, and it's something that's desperately needed for Wacom County and the city, your citizens that live in the city of Bellingham. Thank you.
Well done, Clayton. Carl Wymer?
Good evening, Carl Wymer. I was working late this evening, though I thought I'd stop over and try to nip in the bud a rumor that's going around, that somehow criminal justice planning for Wacom County has, there's some plan that's springing from the City Hall here to take over criminal justice planning for Wacom County. And at least as far as I know, I think that's very far from the truth. What is the truth is that right after the jail proposal failed in November, Councilmember Ken Mann, County Councilmember Ken Mann and I got together and started to try to figure out how do we move forward on a new jail proposal. And we've certainly reached out to members of the Bellingham City Council, to the Lummi Indian Business Council, and other partners in that jail, to try to come forward with a more holistic view of how you deal with the criminal justice system that includes not just the size and the location of a building, but also all the other services that need to go forward with that. So we're working on a resolution and a statement of principles on how to move forward on criminal justice planning that includes those types of things. You know, it isn't public yet because we're working on it in small groups, so we meet the Public Open Meetings Act that was mentioned at the beginning of this. We hope to have it done and introduced in the County Council packet. It'll probably be showing up publicly in about a week, and we hope to have our first discussion of it at our February 9th meeting. What will come out of that resolution is we'll be asking other legislative bodies throughout the county to join with us in that statement of principle so we can move forward to find a consensus process to move forward, not only on an improved jail, but on all the other services that I think we recognize we need and that's been worked on so well now by our Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. So that's kind of where it's at. There's no big secret going on. It's just a, we didn't want to do it in a big thing with 49 people and try to do a resolution by committee, so the county has taken the lead on this. We'll introduce it in about a week, and you'll see it. And hopefully after that, you as a legislative body and other legislative bodies around the county will join with us, either signing onto that statement of principle or let us know where you think we've gone wrong there. So I just wanted to lay that rumor to rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Our next speaker is James Christensen. And if I mispronounce your name, please do correct me. Don't mind.
Hi, good evening. I'm James Christensen. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I work with the Hearing Speech and Deafness Center. I've worked here in Bellingham for 11 years, and I'm here to ask the city council to require that businesses open to the public, restaurants, bars, turn their captioning on on their TVs, if they have TVs in their restaurants or their bars, that captioning should be on as well to allow all people to be able to have access to the services and the entertainment that is being offered on the TV. There's a lot of not only deaf people but hard-of-hearing people as well. There are people who are learning English as a second language, who need that access. There are kids, as they're learning English, can benefit from reading the captions on the TV. The state of Maryland has already passed a law that requires all public accommodate, all public access restaurants and bars or anywhere that have TVs, require them to all have captioning. The city of San Francisco has passed the exact same thing. The city of Seattle is working on it now. In the football stadiums, they're required as well to have captioning on. You know, it really is benefits everyone. I mean, imagine if you're watching a football game in Red Robin, you're not going to hear what they're saying, so it'd be nice to be able to read the captions. And it really makes it a deaf-friendly and hard-of-hearing-friendly place to live. And that's what we want for the county as well as the city of Bellingham. The paper I passed out is a petition that was online. We got a lot of responses and a lot of support throughout varied members of the community, including Western Washington University, Wacom Community College, and we're still gathering more signatures as we go. That has a lot of the information, a lot of the background information that I presented here, but that you'll have to take home. So if you have any information or any questions, I'm happy to pass out my business card so that you can reach me at another time. Sorry, the interpreter has to catch up. Shall I give you my business card, or shall I pass it to who? I have some here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, James. Our next speaker is Ally Cooper. And I don't have anyone else signed up after that, so if you are interested in speaking and you want to stand over here, you can be up next.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ally Cooper. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm an American Sign Language teacher at Meridian High School. I also am a substitute teacher for the school in Anacortes. And I'm also here to ask for, you know, that regulation to be passed, for captioning to be turned on in places of public accommodation. We often will go to restaurants like Boston Pizza. Whenever the Seahawks play, you know, we'll go and we'll meet there, and we have to ask, you know, could you please turn it on? And there are a lot of people in the deaf community or hard-of-hearing community who can't afford a TV, and they want to go in and watch TV or watch the game, and they can't have access to it because they won't turn on the captioning. And sometimes when you ask, people go, oh, no, we've had people complain about that. We really don't want to leave those on or turn those on. You know, they say it's a distraction, but I think a distraction is nothing in comparison to the inability to have access. And imagine if we had the kind of storm that they had on the East Coast recently, you know, and there was no interpreter for the announcements. A lot of deaf people may not have access to that information without the captioning being on. And it's not just deaf people. It's hard-of-hearing people as well who really need it. You know, here, what if there was a tsunami warning or an earthquake warning or something like that? It's just nice to have that access always on, you know, no matter where you might be choosing to go and eat or have a drink or sitting in the hospital or anywhere that might have a TV, should also be accessible under both Washington WHAC as well as the federal laws. You know, and often one will travel, and suppose they're traveling here, it wants it to be a deaf-friendly environment. So I really appreciate your time in letting me come and speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ally. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Okay, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to go to a special presentation. And I'm going to invite Ted Carlson, Public Works Director, and then also Bob Silarski, the Director from Puget Sound Energy for Energy Efficiency Services. If you want to come to the podium, Bob, and bring whoever with your crew that you would like to. And I'm going to turn it over to Ted.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. I think most of the council is aware that the city has had a very long, positive relationship with Puget Sound Energy, especially when it comes to our treatment facilities. We've really worked well with Puget Sound Energy at Post Point in the past on various improvements, energy efficiency projects, going way back, and that certainly held true for the most recent major upgrades we had at Post Point. We spoke a little bit about those earlier today. The increase in secondary capacity had major energy efficiencies associated with that. And Rob Johnson is here from the city of Bellingham, along with our partners from Puget Sound Energy, and he can certainly speak in more detail about the energy efficiency projects that were part of the secondary upgrade. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bob and his team to talk a little bit about the program.
Sure, thank you. I'm actually here, although we're going to show you a big check that we've given to you, that has a big dollar amount. It's also physically large, but I'm really here to thank you. PSC sees energy efficiency as our cheapest, most reliable energy resource. We're constantly trying to buy new resources to beat new loads or replace resources we're losing, and energy efficiency is the best way to do that. And we really appreciate this council supporting the investment that's been made into the treatment plant to make it as energy efficient as it is. We've seen this type of thing done at other plants. It saves a bunch of energy. One thing you might not realize about energy efficiency is that although you've made the investment and you're going to save the energy, you're going to reduce your power bills because of this investment, it also benefits all the citizens of your community, all the customers of PSC, because our power supply portfolio is less expensive than it would have been otherwise without investments like this. So PSC invests over $100 million a year in energy efficiency because it makes our power supply resources less costly, and it controls rates for everybody, not just for those people who participate. So we really are here to thank you for participating and to give you a pretty big check, too. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody here. And I'll introduce Chow Chen. I don't know who's going to speak next, but Chow is the gentleman from our team who is a project manager on it, the project engineer on it. He's the guy who helped make it happen with your team here in the city. Want to do the?
Oh.
I don't know.
So maybe I just talk about the project a little bit. So this is one of the larger projects being done. The project will save 1.8 million care hours, over $100,000 a year in utility saving. The project basically is that we use the high-efficient brewer and also the, you know, the high-efficient diffuser to introduce the air to the secondary treatment to replace the old system to make oxygen and put in there and mix it. So this process is a lot more efficient. And another thing I would like to mention is that we have been working with the plan on various projects through several years, and we're very happy, you know, the city really, you know, want to pursue those efficiency opportunities. I think that I hope we'll continue, you know, partnership and continue to work together and benefit both. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Want to do a picture with the check?
Would you like to say out loud how big that check is, Bob?
I'd like to look at it just to make, I think I know the number. $548,937.
And you can come in front here and we'll do a, to do a photo. Kelly, could you maybe get into the photo?
Kevin said follow me to it. I said, no.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone from Puget Sound Energy. We appreciate you
coming there.
Have you keep the check?
Will they cash that for us?
We can't go out after.
Thank you so much for coming. All right, we're going to move on to our committee meetings. In the morning, the planning committee met, and Gene Knutson is the chair.
Thank you, Madam President. We had one item this morning. It was consideration of the draft adopting ordinance for the city's proposed update to the Critical Areas Ordinance this afternoon. This morning, we heard from Steve Sundine and Kim Wheel, and after a brief discussion, the committee recommends approval and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion in front of us. Any discussion questions? Michael?
Thank you, Pinky. I've raised this issue before, and I'd like to raise it again. I'm concerned about the precedence of setting two different compliance rules, one that the city follows for our essential public facilities and one for everyone else. Why the two sets? What is the benefit to the city to having an alternate route for compliance? And if it's a benefit, why don't we offer it to everyone else? What is it about, you know, our parks and trails that deserve special treatment? Under state law, there is a definition for essential public facilities, but it's not parks and trails. It's more things like jails and airports and sewer treatment plants. So I guess I'm still uncomfortable with having those two alternate forms of compliance.
Okay, I'll start with responding. It's my understanding, when the list was formulated by the various departments in 2005 when we last adopted the CAO, that those were the features and facilities identified by the city as needing, as being essential and being very difficult to cite. And so up until now, they had been under the exemption section, which really didn't mean, they really weren't exempt from the CAO requirements, but they were allowed to, if they couldn't meet them, to still go forward with, you know, review, meeting best available science, providing a critical error report. It really, it turned out to be not very much different than every other private and public project that comes forward, practically speaking. In addition, the projects here, and we can, James Street, really all the projects have had other agency permits, and they don't recognize an essential public facility. So in the end, it really turned out to be all the same requirements. I don't know if that gets to the essence of your question, but it's my understanding that they were deemed by the city to be essential for whether it was transportation connections or, like, for example, the sewage treatment plant, things like that that we've been talking about even tonight.
Well, I guess I don't doubt that they're essential in some sense, but they don't appear to be essential in the sense of state law, which authorizes this exemption. Maybe we have flexibility and can extend it, but I'm still unclear, as you say, we're not really exempt from regulation. We go through a different set. How is it different? How is it easier or better for us? And if it's easier and better for us when citing a trail or a street project, can't we offer that same easier and better pathway to compliance for other people?
I don't know that it's easier and better, actually. You should ask what the other departments that have to go through and get their permits for, whether it's any of the city, you saw James Street this morning in the video, maybe, yeah, I think you did. I don't necessarily think it's better, but it allows these facilities that we've deemed to be essential to go forward. And really, Steve and I were thinking about all the projects we've worked on, all the permits we've issued. It really hasn't resulted in anything, anything different. They are in their own section now. They are a Type 2 process, which means there's a notice of application required, environmental review as always, and then they also have to meet other agency requirements. So fundamentally, they really aren't any different. But if it had to be, let's take the sewage treatment plant, which is a great example tonight. There's only, there was only one place that secondary clarifier could go, and it did have to go into a wetland buffer, and there were some other critical area impacts, and it was essential to locate it there. They did still mitigate. They still provided all the other requirements, but they did, they were allowed to go there without going through a variance process, for example.
Council members, any other comments, questions? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
End of committee.
Thank you, Gene. Our next committee was the Public Works, Public Safety, which is chaired by Terry Borneman.
Thank you, Pinky. We had four items before us today. The first was a bid award for 2015 sanitation, sanitary sewer replacement project, EU-0170. The project consists of installing approximately 2,900 linear feet of sanitary sewer main, associated manholes and side services in Old Fairhaven Parkway, 21st Street, 22nd Street, and Donovan Avenue. The project will eliminate two existing sewer siphons below Patton Creek. Eighty-seven solicitations were viewed. The city received six bids, which were open and publicly viewed on December 17th, 2015. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was $1,291,745.64, including sales tax by Strider Construction, Inc. The engineer's estimate was $1,159,682.60, including sales tax. The committee recommended awarding the bid to Strider Construction and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion in front of us. Any questions, comments, council members? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, the second item was a bid award for the commercial street parking garage upgrades, bid number 72B-2015. This project, the project at the parking garage was originally a larger project. It was broken in, into two parts. This is the first part. The remaining portion will come later. The commercial street parking garage updates includes handrail improvements to comply with ADA accessibility requirements, comprehensive signing, and wayfinding improvements for increased visibility, ease of access and rebranding, stairwell lighting, and the addition of windows for security and safety improvements, access controls for permit holders, and electric vehicle charging stations for public hourly parking. The city received five bids, which were publicly opened on December 10th, 2015. H.B. Hanson from Linden, Washington, was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $451,485.45, including any applicable Washington State sales, sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $550,926. As part of the discussion on this, Councilmember Hamill raised an issue about ADA accessibility regarding the pay station. It was talked to staff, addressed it, and said that they would find ways to deal with these concerns. The committee recommended approval and ISO move.
Second.
Council members, questions, comments? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
The third item before us was an ordinance of the city of Bellingham regarding Washington, regarding water service installation fees, amending Section 15.08.220 of the Bellingham Municipal Code. The Bellingham Municipal Code authorizes the city to impose fees to cover the city's cost of installing water service connections. The proposed ordinance would amend Bellingham Municipal Code 15.08.220 to reflect current practices and terminology and to promote administrative efficiencies and predictability as outlined in the attached staff memorandum. The committee recommended approval and ISO move.
Second. Any discussion, questions? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
The last item was an item that had been, was moved to the consent agenda and brought up so that we could, the staff could highlight some of the issues with this. And this is a first addendum to the inter-local agreement for sewer services between the city and the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District. The inter-local agreement for sewer services specifies requirements for the, for Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District's contributions of its proportionate share of major capital improvements to the city sewer system. The city recently completed the Post Point wastewater treatment plant improvement project under the terms of the inter-local agreement. The Post Point project qualifies as a major improvement. The district's proportionate share of the project has been calculated to be $2,362,363.99. The attached addendum provides details of the calculations and terms of the repayment proposed by the city. Council action is required to approve the terms of the repayment. Committee recommended authorizing the contract and ISO move.
Second.
Second. Comments, questions? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
End of committee report.
Thank you, Terry. Our next committee is Lake Wacome Reservoir Natural Resources, which is chaired by Councilmember Hamel.
Thank you, Pinky. We had four items before us this afternoon. The first one was a presentation by Renee La Croix, Director of Natural Resources for City of Bellingham, presenting on an update of the largely complete Skalikum Creek reroute project phases one and two. And just for folks at home to have a reference for that, the phase one is, the channel is from Bug Lake underneath I-5 all the way over to James Street. And phase two is from James Street East, north of Sunset Pond, so people have a reference for that. Total project costs are 2.9 million dollars. This is for information only. Second item before us this afternoon was requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the grant and loan agreement between the city of Bellingham and the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Skalikum Creek reroute water quality and biotic integrity improvements, a phase three project. Just going to read the summary statement. State of Washington Department of Ecology has awarded a grant in the amount of $500,000, a standard loan in the amount of $616,880, and a forgivable principal in the amount of $205,627 to the city of Bellingham to be used for the Skalikum Creek reroute water quality and biotic integrity improvements, phase three project. The committee recommended to pass the resolution and ISO move.
Second. Questions, comments? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Third item before us was a, an appropriation of funds from the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Skalikum Creek reroute water quality and biotic integrity improvements, phase three projects. Washington State Department of Ecology, this is the same basic language here, the, in terms of awarding the grant for $500,000 with the loan of 822,507 and a forgivable principal of 205,627 for use in the Skalikum Creek reroute water quality and biotic integrity improvements, phase three project. These funds are needed to, to be appropriated into the 2016 budget so the project can proceed forward. The committee recommended approval and ISO move.
Second. Questions, comments? We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Fourth item before us today was a presentation by Habitat and Restoration Manager Annalise Burns in regards to Bellingham Habitat Restoration Technical Assessment. This was a very in-depth presentation. The city did not have a comprehensive scientific plan to prioritize and integrate habitat restoration and protection efforts across the city. The purpose of the restoration assessment is to develop a science-based framework to guide future habitat restoration, protection and recovery work. And this was for information only. End of report.
Thank you, Dan. We had an executive session today. We had two items in front of us. First one was a potential litigation, claim number 2015 dash 56, 2015 dash 57 and 2015 dash 58. Staff provided information on three related potential litigation matters, information only, and no action was taken. The second potential litigation, staff provided information on the, on potential litigation matter. Direction was given, no action was taken. And then we went to committee of the whole. We had one item in front of us today. It was a discussion on the contract for electronic home monitoring with the Friendship and Diversion Services. We had a very extensive discussion and presentation. We had Barbara Miller here from the Friendship Diversion Services and Court Commissioner Pete Smiley, who talked a lot about the program. Couple of things about the program itself, the mayor's office, police department, city attorney's office and municipal court are actively exploring alternatives to incarceration for individuals who are charged with, convicted of misdemeanor offenses. So electronic monitoring is not for people with domestic violence or, these are nonviolent crimes that we're looking at for electric, for monitoring. Also, the cost is considerably lower and then the cost to the defendant will be no more than $15 a day. So we are, I encourage anyone to watch the afternoon presentation if you want any more details about it, but we are, think this is a very positive. The technology is cutting edge. It has GPS tracking. You can actually talk to people through your wrist working and it also has alcohol monitoring. So we are cutting-edge technology and we're also, we're excited about the prospect of having jail alternatives and showing leadership in the county. So that was our one item today in committee of the whole. And we have one set of minutes to approve. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes for January 11th, 2016?
Move approval.
Second. Motion in front of us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And we're on to older new business. Am I missing something, Dan? You're giving me a funny look. Councilmember Murphy?
I might need to start aside business and mind reading. I did not know that our wonderful community members from the hearing impaired community would be with us this evening, but it's quite a gift. Because today, earlier in our older new business session, I said I would hope to work with administration and with the city council to explore different options so we can offer better interpretive services via ASL or anything like that, so we can improve the partnership with our hearing impaired community. And I look forward to working on that, especially in partnership.
Councilmember Hamel?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the item that I talked about this afternoon in regards to some of the concerns that citizens have regarding unsolicited materials being deposited on their properties. And this would come in the form of phone books and ad circulars with a, like a newspaper wrapper around them, but are, they're unsolicited, they're not welcome on people's property. So there's been a lot of discussion on some of the social media, citizen neighborhood websites, particularly next door, in regards to these items being deposited. And I did speak with city attorney Shane Brady on this to try to get a sense of direction on what the city could do, if anything. He was able to find a court case in Seattle where Seattle City Council put together an ordinance to make it illegal to deposit phone books on people's property without permission. Unfortunately, the Seattle, after passing the ordinance, that was challenged by the phone book companies and they, they were fined, the city had to pay $500,000 in restitution to the phone companies, also had to pay attorney's fees. So I think the number, final number is somewhere over $700,000. So we don't have the ability to, to do that, nor do we have the finances to enter into that type of court situation. So the other piece was the, the, how do you, how does the BMC or the Bellingham Municipal Code define a newspaper? And so what the, what's currently being deposited on people's lawns by our local daily paper of record is defined as a newspaper because it does provide a news article or two on the cover. And so I've asked Mr. Brady to talk to co-compliance officers to see if there's anything we can do. And right now, basically, it looks like we're limited to sidewalks in terms of if the gentleman here or a woman who's throwing the newspaper items, if they, if it lands on the sidewalk, that's the only jurisdiction that we have. So sorry to report that, but I just wanted to let folks know that we have looked into that, so.
I imagine if enough people let businesses who advertise in that paper know their displeasure, they would quit buying the ads and you'd see that dry up. So, you know, if people are so inclined to let them know that they don't like that, they probably wouldn't be printed. Just an idea.
And there is an opt-out too for the, the item that looks like a newspaper but really is an ad circular, so that you can call the, the Bellingham Herald and ask to opt out of that.
Anyone else? Okay. And this afternoon in older new business, I did propose that we draft a resolution around the safety and support for Planned Parenthood and that will be coming in front of Public Works Public Safety on February 8th. Anyone else in older new business? All right, we're going over to you, Mayor. Mayor's report.
The AWC legislative days are this week. Brian and I will be going down Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday, I'll be participating on a panel regarding homelessness and I'm really anxious and excited to actually talk about the things that we're doing in our community. That was why I was asked to participate. And then on Thursday, we'll be meeting with most of our legislative delegation and some of the legislative leadership to talk about our legislative agenda and let them know the things that we've all determined are important to us. So I look forward to doing that once a year. Then I have, hm? Yeah. Well, I hardly know any legislators anymore. It doesn't take long for those to turn over, though the staff members and the government affairs people don't. So I know all them still. I have one reappointment for your approval, which is Jenny Contral to the Bellingham Arts Commission.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And then there's two reappointments for your information. One, Robert Hendricks and Isaac, Isaac Post to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Group and reappointment of Dick Skeers to the Public Works Advisory Board. And then I'll have stuff to report on the 8th when I come back. Are any of you going?
Not yet. Councilmember Lillyquist?
Yeah. Mayor, before you go, I'd like to bring up a topic potentially for our legislative agenda. As you know, Bellingham is now a Main Street program and they're actually, it's a very popular program and that's part of the problem. The Main Street program allows donor businesses to take a discount on their VNO taxes so that they can donate to a Main Street program for downtown revitalization and then part of that donation is offset by a tax credit. Very popular program and that's part of the problem. The, the program has not grown in size, it's actually been cut. And there's an annual cap that Olympia sets on how much tax cuts can be given away. It used to be it lasted most of the year, then it lasted half the year. I think this year it closed out within the first few weeks. So it's not just Bellingham, but numerous communities are now asking the legislature to look at that program and consider increasing the amount of tax credit. Is, I think it's 1.3 million statewide or maybe 2 million or something like that. And the request is to double that amount. It's large for organizations like ours, relatively small for the state budget, but still they're facing very, very tight times. So I'd kind of like to ask the rest of the council if we could consider adding a request in our legislative agenda when Kelly meets legislators, to take a look at the Main Street program and the fact that it's so popular, not in our community, everywhere, that it's used up so quickly. It's a great way to promote downtown revitalization, business development. I don't know, I'm looking for feedback on whether or not the rest of the council thinks that's an item we could add to our list.
Well, we, and may I just say that we had a visit from the president and staff from the board that came to us and asked.
The Downtown Partnership?
Right, the Downtown Partnership and asked us if we would mention that. And there seems to be a, one of our city only, or one of our items that it fits under and without, I'm sorry, without council approval, I was gonna talk to especially Jeff Morris, who's the chair of the Economic Development Committee in the, in the House about that.
Great.
So I don't think we actually need to formally add it, Michael, because I think it's, it's under economic development, it's covered under one of our, we kind of make those categories a little broad so that when things come up, we can include them. But I do know from other discussions I've had prior to today, as you all know too, education and now mental health are the two priorities that are coming forward. So in a short session in the supplemental budget, I wouldn't be too disappointed if we have to wait till next year. But it might be something that we want to look at as a city too. Because that was my, kind of my fallback if we hadn't become a Main Street city, is to see if there's something we can do locally to extend the benefit.
Well, I do appreciate you bringing up that topic. This may not be the year, but I think it's important to keep planting the seed down in Olympia, the importance of that program for communities like our own.
Yeah, it's been very successful.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else, Mayor? Anything else for you? Okay. Okay, so let's move to consent agenda. Move approval. Second.
On the dots.
Do, no. We have a motion in front of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And I believe that's it for this evening. Okay, so the next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be February 8th, 2016. Thank you all for joining us and have a good night.